Keep this group strong and, and, and Lord just, uh, just bless us. Just bless this country and our county. In your name we pray. Amen.
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 Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by Commissioner Gary Furk.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Benton County Commissioners now in session. Madam Furk, you call the road.
David Stokes. Wayne Fowler. Sunny Paul. Roseanne Ward. Last one.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, before we get started, uh, just in case if y'all wondering if your eyes are failing you or at home your, your audio's not just right, uh, Roseanne Ward is not here tonight. She's traveling with the family. I'm Jeff Murphy and I'll try to get us through this as best I can, but, uh, your audio is fine and your eyes are fine. Uh, next item on the, uh, order of business is approving the agenda. So here a motion to a pen. All right, uh, the, uh, um, motion is, uh, to approve the agenda is, uh, made by, uh, Barry Holland and second by, uh, Commissioner Burke. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Melton?
We need to make a couple of amendments to the agenda. We had, uh, some headers that, uh, were not exactly correct. Uh, you should have each, each mister should have one. One is, uh, for resolution thirteen and resolution nineteen. They should read as the amendment shows.
Okay, does everybody have the copy of the amendment in front of them? Uh, it reads to, uh, delete the language of, uh, item nineteen and replace it with the following, uh, for, um, uh, amendment, uh, for, for resolution, uh, thirteen, the resolution by Ken Christopher to appropriate budget funds in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars from the fund balance to an expenditure line item. The second amendment is for, uh, resolution nineteen, uh, delete all the language in the header, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of four thousand dollars from fund balance to an expenditure line item. Can we get a?
I'll make a motion to amend.
Motion to amend and second by, uh, Commissioner King. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now vote on the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is adopted as amended. All right, citizens forum, I don't have anybody signed up to speak here. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to the commission? All right, moving along, any commissioner wishes to speak? Commissioner Preston, you're recognized.
I'll start with a hello to everybody. Hello. I attended the, uh, May fourteenth budget meeting just a few days ago. There was a lot of talk about fund balances, quite a bit of talk about sales tax, investment income, TVA dollars. After witnessing this meeting and quite a bit of thought, I've decided to talk on some of these same subjects here tonight. And the numbers and the dollars I'll be using are as found in the Tennessee State Controller's Benton County two thousand and twenty-four audit, the most recent audit finished in January of this year. Eleven million, one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollar general fund estimated budget. Actual expenditures shown in the two thousand and twenty-four audit was eleven million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Budget did a really nice job on expenditures. They only missed their estimate, only missed actual dollars by a little more than thirty-four thousand. The large budget estimate that was missed was the revenues, the revenues received by the county, the revenue streams. An overfunded general fund budget of three million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars. Budget estimated, an overfunded budget of a little more than ninety-eight thousand dollars. We were told Wednesday, the fourteenth, that fund balances are shrinking, fund balances are getting smaller. The audit shows the general fund fund balance to be fifteen million, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. Three million of this being restricted funds, some folks like to call it the hospital fund, the hospital account. The largest missed revenue in this budget that's being talked about was the, um, investment income. Budget estimated four hundred thousand, actual dollars shown in the audit was a little better than one point six million dollars, a difference of a little better than one point two million dollars. So after I speak tonight on this, I'm sure at least some of y'all are gonna be told, um, budget didn't have a clue what interest rates were gonna do, investment income was gonna do. I don't see that as exactly true. Tennessee's government pool investment rate during the time this budget was being voted, while the time this budget was being built and elected, their interest rate on dollars was four point nine percent, thin and growing. We had a clear vision during the working of the two thousand and twenty-four budget, what investment income was gonna do, what it could be. Property tax, estimated budget dollars missed actual dollars by better than three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand, how do we do that? How do we underestimate property tax at such a rate of three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars? A zero percent uncollected rate would have been more, much more accurate than the six percent uncollected rate chosen by budget. Local options, sales tax, a missed estimate of better than two hundred and four thousand dollars. TVA, almost three hundred thousand dollars. Bank exercise tax, almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Five large revenue streams, budget missed, estimated those five just yourself's a little better than two point two million dollars. Three million, six hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six more dollars received than Benton County spent. This is nearly thirty-three percent of the actual general fund budget. I remember during the two thousand and twenty-four budget workings of talk of raising the property tax and blaming it on the sheriff. If I'm, if somebody sees me wrong, if I'm, if I'm remembering that incorrect, please correct me. I'm pretty sure I remember that. The school budget showing a total expenditures of twenty-two million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The school received an overfund budget of three million, fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars. The school's budget was estimated by budget, voted and passed with the commission showing a one million, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine dollar underfunded budget. This is a variance of better than four point two million dollars, equal to eighteen, almost nineteen percent of the school's budget. I assure you, surrounding counties are not allowing this type of action in their budget. I know because I've got copies of the budgets. Uh, our school last balanced budget was in two thousand and thirteen. I asked our budget chair not to accept a school budget that is not balanced. It was said at the May fourteenth budget meet that the school budget would be underfunded this year that's being worked on right now, two million dollars. Should budget not make adjustments to the two thousand and twenty-five budget and allow the numbers to remain as shown, an underfunded school budget of better than one point eight million dollars. Then we'll have two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budgets combined, given the school fund balance, the appearance of almost four million dollars less. It is my opinion, this is somewhat hides the actual dollar amount. Four million dollars less than actual dollars. As for the first bank building, I've got to say this and I'm gonna close on this. As for the first bank purchase, I'm very proud to have been a part of the members who opposed this purchase. As for me, it's not always about winning. It's about making a statement, taking a vote, feeling good about it, feeling like you did the right thing. It's very clear with our citizens, nobody's gotta tell them, well, we, the ones who opposed the purchase, stand on their tax dollars. I ask these same commissioners, the ones that opposed the purchase, to be their better self. I'm almost finished, Jeff. To be their better self. Feelings, uh, don't, don't let difficult feelings, maybe even anger or not liking somebody or something, don't let this influence your vote. Always try your best at keeping Benton County, Benton County's interests first. And I ask everybody, please, uh, you probably gonna need to remind me of this every now and then. That being said, I'm gonna yield the floor. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioner wish to speak?
Chair.
Commissioner Arnold.
Other night, I was named to be made to the property committee meeting, uh, business family issues, uh, and, uh, we had a lady come up here last month and I brought a card to the mayor's, he stopped the senior outside the office, brought a thank you card to give to the commission that I gave to the, uh, mayor. In that meeting, I understand that the property committee, uh, made a recommendation to the district chair and another lady, part of the office space that the county has. And I talked to her this morning, this afternoon, I'm in my office and I told her, I said, I'm not for that, because Frank West's president, uh, rented a office building to two individuals that don't wanna drive to Jackson to the office to save gas. Plus, we're renting it for a hundred dollars a month, which does not cover the utilities for the water, electric, uh, for the office space. Uh, I just think, you know, if it was a state agency contacting us and saying, hey, you know, call us in Nashville, say we need a place for this employee, it would be something we can look at. But we're not getting calls from the, they work for the federal government. Uh, it's the employees that's wanting to rent the building and the employees just won't pay a hundred dollars a month, obviously cheaper than buying gas out of Jackson. I commend them for the job they're doing. I just think that it's a bad precedent for us to rent the buildings to them and have such a low amount of rent if you don't. I mean, I get three hundred dollars a month for an office, you know, uh, at Paris, you know, just as one rent office. And, uh, but it's, I just think it's gonna be a bad idea. It's not on our agenda, it wasn't on our thing the last month at the meeting, uh, and I'm sorry I missed that, but I feel like I need to tell y'all, I think it's a bad idea for us to rent buildings to individuals and not an agency itself, just, you know, keep them. We may have other employees that's working somewhere for the government that's having to drive to Jackson and they say, hey, I wanna be like that too, you know? A hundred dollars a month is pretty cheap.
Thank you, Commissioner Arnold. Any other commissioner?
May I say something?
Commissioner Bain, yes ma'am.
I, I just wanna say, our county roads are awful. They're awful. I don't care what the highway department says. I've listened to the people in this county complain, complain, complain. Believe me, I'm one of them. They keep going out and patching holes and it's no time that the patches come out and the holes are worse than they were to start with. That something needs to be done to get our roads fixed. I know it costs a lot of money for whatever, a mile or whatever, but, I mean, it's ridiculous. It's totally ridiculous. When people are popping tires, it, something's gotta be done and, and the patches are not getting it. Something, there's, something's gotta be worked out. We gotta take care of our roads for our citizens.
Thank you, Commissioner Bain. Anybody else? Moving on, uh, Mr. Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you, sir. I'm good, Bill. Um, I would like to have somebody to come up. Yeah, I'd like for Scott Hill to give you a real brief presentation on some money that he has been working on, that he could save us if we want to do this.
So, y'all know me, I'm Scott, your IT director. Uh, a couple of months ago, um, Spyglass, what was the company, Spyglass Company or LLC, they came to, uh, asked to do an IT audit and to see how much money that they could save and then they would pocket that, that extra money that they had savings. You guys, uh, turned that down and a couple of commissioners, uh, Mr. Murphy is one of them, uh, came to me and asked if, if I would do the audit for us and just to kinda see what the numbers were. So I acquired the, uh, the bills for the telephone and internet services and I was a little, uh, astonished about that. We are paying close to forty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars a year for telecom services. I have since went through that bill and actually broke it out per office of what the savings are and what you see on your screen there, the red line is what we're currently paying and the green line is what we can be paying if you all approve for us to do our telecom stuff in-house. So that means we can do all of our telephones minus the sheriff's office, you're, you're kinda separating that little world over there. But, um, wi- with this, we can do all the phone services in-house and that would save a huge amount of money, uh, the first year because we have a little bit, it's four thousand and two hundred dollar upfront cost to do our phone systems and telecom in-house. So the first year, you're only gonna be saving eighteen thousand, two fifty-four, but second year and subsequent years after that, it will be twenty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-four dollars in savings if we do it in-house. Um, so basically what I'm asking is for permission to do that and it's not just one company. I know I, I have vested interest in SCR Network, uh, but we're also spreading, as they say, we're spreading the love around because we're also getting TEC Spectrum and we're also still gonna keep a NIST for certain, uh, phone lines are just really difficult to, to deal with. So it's not one company is going to take over the whole thing like right now we have in this, it's kinda taking over all of our telecom services. We're actually gonna spread that out and get a better deal if, if y'all approve it, so. Um, do y'all have any questions on that? If you, if you guys, uh, give the mayor permission to proceed, then we'll, we'll be saving twenty-two thousand dollars a year, so it's a heck of a savings, so. You can go patch some roads or something.
Scott?
Yes, sir.
We said in-house, technically, not in-house county, actually your company does, right?
No, actually, I'm going to build the system in this courthouse. Um, we're actually gonna put the phone servers and everything in here, then we'll actually wind up using TEC as our internet provider for the courthouse to actually give us our, our link back out to the, the world, so. Um, Ian wrote it with SCR Network and, uh, I wish it was broke down into the other, uh, TEC Spectrum, all those as well, because, you know, obviously me and TEC and the NIST don't do television services, we do have to have television services, so Spectrum will, uh, naturally grab those. But we're, we're trying to, to make it less of a monopoly and spread it more around and also shop around and get a better price, so that way we can save some more money. Any other questions on this? Newer? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. I think the mayor will probably, the mayor in Scott will probably be, uh, uh, presenting a resolution to us to consider that in the, uh, the next month. Now we're down to approving the minutes, so you should have the movement minutes in front of you. Entertained a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Miller, seconded by Commissioner Price. All those in favor? All those opposed? The minutes are approved as presented. Report of the public utilities. Motion to approve?
Second.
This is motion by, um, uh, motion by Commissioner Arnold and, uh, seconded by Commissioner Miller. All those in favor? Any opposed? Minutes are approved, the report of the public utilities are approved. All right, uh, we're down to, uh, the resolutions. Uh, number seven on your agenda, this is resolution number one, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint John Killen to the Benton County Industrial Development Board to serve a four-year term. Thank you, Mr. Melton, uh, and Mr. Holland, uh, second motion, all those in favor, uh, vote on your, uh, machine.
You see here?
Yes.
Raise your hand. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
You adopt resolution number one, congratulations, Mr. Killen. Item number eight, resolution number two, um, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Frank Wright to the Benton County Records Commission to serve a four-year term. Motion by Commissioner Holland, seconded by Commissioner Arnold. All those in favor? Machine is open.
Is he here?
Mr. Wright?
May I say something?
I don't think he's here tonight.
Uh, he's probably not here, uh, I understood a couple of days ago, right before the graduation, he fell and got hurt, so that's probably why he's not here tonight, but, uh, you know, uh, I do know that he did get hurt.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Anyone wish to change their vote? Fourteen yes.
Okay, uh, resolution number three, item number nine, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Jeff Murphy to the Benton County Records Commission to serve a four-year term. Uh, motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Price. Machine is open, the commissioners record your votes.
It's all I can do, I can't even vote for you, Jeff.
I think, yeah, I need all the votes back.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries thirteen yes, one seven.
Thank you. Item number ten, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Jeff Murphy to the Benton County Tennessee River Resort District, TRRD Board to serve a four-year term. Motion by Commissioner Price, seconded by Commissioner Melton. Machine is open. Record your conscience.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries thirteen yes, one seven.
Item number eleven, uh, resolution number five, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars received from the city of Camden to the library's budget. Motion by Mr. Melton and seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Machine is open, record your vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number twelve, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of one thousand dollars to the election commissioners, to the election commission's budget to cover projected shortfall in payroll. Second, uh, motion by Mr. Melton, the second by Commissioner Nunrie. Machine is open, record your vote. Rocky. Commissioner Preston.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number thirteen, uh, resolution number seven, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-four cents received from TDEC state ARPA funds to a proper line item for expenditure. Motion by Commissioner Arnold, seconded by Commissioner Nunrie. Machine is open, record your vote.
Chairman.
Well, Commissioner Preston.
The count one seventy-one, uh, I'm not finding the four seven four zero one. When I go to count one seventy-one now, I am finding American Rescue Plan grant number one, I'm finding that in one twenty-seven, page fifty-eight of our budget. And then when it goes into the increases, contributions, I'm not finding the line item three sixteen. I don't mean, I, I don't know that I can be any more clearly here. I go into the budget and I'm not seeing this stuff.
Okay.
This is, this is not our, our ARPA money, this is state or federal that was matching a grant and they sent us the check. We had to put it in and we put it in one seventy-one because that's where the comptroller told us to put it. It's not where our ARPA was, it's a different ARPA, but they gave us the four hundred and sixty-three thousand, we had to pay it out to the utility districts, the water districts to do their big projects with.
Yeah.
And so we just put it into three sixteen, it's not one that we put money in the budget for. This is money that we put in there when we received the check and we're dispersing it from the expenditure account, uh, that we're increasing from where we got the check. We had to transfer it to that three sixteen that you're talking about. There was none in the budget, but we use those accounts because that's where the comptroller told us to put that pass-through money.
Thank you, Mayor. You got my support.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I jumped, uh, jumped on resolution there.
Okay, item number fourteen, resolution number eight, a resolution by Director Schools' Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of twenty-four hundred dollars received from health surveys to the school budget. Um, motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Price. Any discussion, questions? Thank you, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries thirteen yes, one seven.
All right, item number fifteen, resolution number nine, a resolution by Director Schools' Mark Florence to appropriate budget funds in the amount of one hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the school's budget to fund maintenance and food supplies. Motion by Commissioner Melton and, and seconded by Commissioner Arnold. Is there any discussion, questions? If not, we'll vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number sixteen, resolution number ten, a resolution by Director Schools' Mark Florence to budget funds in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-four cents received from the Tennessee Department of Education to the school's budget. Motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Melton. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? If not, we'll vote. If not, we'll vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fourteen yes, motion carries.
Resolution number eleven, item number seventeen. Resolution by Director of Schools Mr. Florence to move funds in the amount of $8,644.37 within the school's budget. Motion is by Commissioner Holland, and seconded by Commissioner Melton. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? Not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number eighteen, resolution number twelve. A resolution by Benton County Sheriff Ken Christopher to correct the clerical error on resolution number 202-5421-17 concerning surplus property. Motion by Commissioner Bain, and a second by Commissioner Melton. Is there any questions or discussions on this resolution? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
This is item number nineteen, resolution number thirteen. A resolution by Ken Christopher to appropriate budget funds in the amount of $360 from the fund balance to an expenditure line item for the purpose of purchasing licenses for AEDs. We have a motion by Commissioner. This is the one.
This is one.
This is the one. Okay.
Actually, we amended it, I thought.
The agenda was amended, resolution.
Yes, skip to this, and then go back to.
All right, that's my mistake. This is a resolution number thirteen. A resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $4,200 from fund balance of fund one seventy-one to an expenditure line item for the purpose of purchasing bulletproof vests for newly hired officers.
Hmm, wait a minute, thirteen?
That was thirteen.
That is thirteen.
Yeah, we changed the heading, but the original.
The, the one I read was correct.
Original thirteen had the wrong heading on it.
Yeah, because it had fund balance one seventy-one, that's.
It also had the wrong amount of money.
And the wrong amount of money.
Resolution thirteen is for the licensing.
Mr. Cooper, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, may I understand that would be that the header was wrong, so one on the agenda you've already amended to be correct? So that one would need to be amended, the actual resolution would need to be amended to correct it. That's the second thirteen resolution amended.
Okay.
Currently, it's unamended, so that caption would be correct, the agenda's been amended. That makes any sense for the resolution now, it needs to be amended.
Still has to do the resolution.
Hope that's, I hope that's clear.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to amend.
All right, we have a motion to amend by Commissioner Melton, and seconded by Commissioner Arnold. No?
Yes, seconded to amend.
Seconded by Commissioner Price. The amendment should read, "A resolution by Commissioner Ken Christopher to appropriate budget funds in the amount of $360 from fund balance to an expenditure line item for the purchase of purchasing licenses for the AED." Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Chairman, the third where it adds is incorrect also. It says $6,485, where it should say $360. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Chairman, that's right.
It's not the one I got.
We do, we do have an amendment that is corrected. Well, no, it's not, but, that is correct. So, voting on the amendment.
Yeah.
Everybody clear, we're voting on the amendment to amend this resolution to the dollar amount will be $360. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, you'll have to do it on your machine, a yes on your machine.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries amended.
Now we're voting the resolution as amended. All right, we're ready to vote. Any further discussion? We're voting on the resolution as amended, machine's open.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Clerk, I should say. Item number twenty, a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to declare various items in the possession of Benton County Sheriff's Office as surplus property for the purpose of disposal. A motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Bain. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution?
Question. I notice your sheriff, he won't sell all these on good deals, but these other ones that we done in the night, are they going to be sold on good deals also?
Yes, sir.
And I see you donating something to the prison?
Yes, sir, it's one that we cannot get a title on, couldn't get it whenever we got it, and they want me to take it just for the body, to do body work, that they're training that they're doing in the prison. They asked for it, we couldn't do anything with it, the voter was bad when we got it. All it is, is the body, they're not be putting a frame or nothing on the road.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
We're at item number twenty-one. A resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds received from miscellaneous refunds to a proper line item for expenditure. We have a motion by Commissioner Melton, and seconded by Commissioner Bain. Is there any discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Still, we've got the, hasn't changed.
Yes, no, we're saying.
Yes.
I think Gary just prefers his lock down.
Pardon, do you mean to say?
Lock that button.
Anyone else? Fourteen yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, this is resolution number sixteen. Item number twenty-two on your agenda, a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $4,500 from the deputy's payroll to various other sheriff's department payroll lines to cover shortfall. Now, here's a motion by Commissioner.
Uh, Price, and we'll give it another second.
Motion by Commissioner Price, and seconded by Commissioner Keen. Commissioner Melton, you recognize that?
This one also needs to be amended, you should have a copy of amendment four sixteen, delete all the language from the header and substitute the, all the following.
Okay, I'll read the amendment. A resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $2,270 from the deputy's payroll to various other sheriff's department payroll line items to cover shortfall.
Motion to do amendment.
A motion by Commissioner Keen for the amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Any other discussion?
They were ready to vote on the amendment.
We're voting on the amendment, the machine is open.
Anyone wish to change their vote on the amendment? Motion carries fourteen yes.
All right, we're now ready to vote on the resolution number sixteen as amended, as amended. As amended, um. All right, machine is open, cast your vote.
Anybody wish to change their vote?
Motion carries fourteen yes.
Okay, item number twenty-three, amendment, resolution number seventeen. A resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $11,000 from the guard's payroll to various other jail payroll to cover shortfall. A motion to approve by Commissioner Keen, and the second by Commissioner, um. A motion by Commissioner Bain, and the second by Commissioner Keen.
To amend it?
Commissioner Melton, this is recognized.
It needs to be amended, uh, the, uh, resolution, uh, needs to be changed. Do we have a copy of the corrected resolution?
All right, does everybody got a copy of the amendment in front of you? Um, the, uh, the amendment is to delete all language after the header and substitute the following. Resolution by Sheriff Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $8,700 from the guard's payroll to various other jail, jail payroll items to cover shortfall. Any other discussion on the amendment? All right, now we're voting on the amendment.
Question?
Question? Commissioner Arnold.
What's a per profession?
What Kay does, she handles, uh, sentence management. What it is, she works back in the jail, she handles, she comes to court.
She's part of the jail?
Yes.
Recognize it, Adam.
Any other questions? All right, machine's open, cast your vote on the amendment.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
We're now ready to vote on the resolution as amended. All right, the machine's open, cast your vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number twenty-four, resolution number eighteen. A resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $26,000 from fund balance to an expenditure line item for the purpose of funding shortfalls in sheriff's budget. Motion by Commissioner. Motion by Commissioner Price, and seconded by Commissioner Melton. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? Commissioner Arnold.
This is due money out of the general fund.
That's correct.
We got about a month left in our budget. Engine, engine, right?
Correct.
Sheriff, is there anywhere in your budget that you can move money around, that, you know, if you got, you ain't got no line items, you have not zeroed out, if you can't move money out of?
I believe we looked at that already, and there was nowhere to move anything. Tim's not here, but he is, he was the one that come to me, and he said, "We're just out of money to move."
So at the end of June, there, everything will be zeroed out, nothing else that you've got?
That should cover it, this should finish us out for the rest of this fiscal year.
Any other questions? Commissioner Preston.
Yes, I was, uh, I was seated at the law enforcement committee meeting, and this conversation took place. It was reported then that there were forty-two state prisoners. I don't remember the population of others, but the forty-two state prisoners that were paid for. And a lot of that food supplies, drug and medical, that's to cover prisoners, water and sugar prisoners, everything involved, population of the jail except communication deaths, is what it was explained to me. That being shared, I, I thought I would just share that with the city commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? We'll proceed to vote, the machine's open.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes.
Item number twenty-five, a resolution number nineteen. A resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of $4,000 from fund balance to an expenditure line item for the purpose of funding salaries for courthouse security. Motion by Commissioner Bain, seconded by Commissioner Price. Commissioner Melton, you recognize?
Yes, we, we need to amend this one also, uh, delete all the language and substitute the following for resolution nineteen, everyone should have a copy of that.
I had two pages of the same.
One of them, I believe, was to amend the, uh, agenda, the one without any explanation, amended the agenda, the one with the language as to the unsigned fund balance and deputy's debt is the amendment we're doing now.
So, in short, the amendment is, uh, basically changing the, uh, resolution sponsor from the sheriff to the mayor, uh, because, um, uh, the sheriff wouldn't be able to, uh, request the, uh, resolution for another office holder. So, the, as amended, it says, "A resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of $4,000 from fund balance to an expenditure line item for the purpose of funding salaries." Bylaws. Any other discussion? Or if not, we'll proceed to vote on the amendment.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fourteen yes, as, as, or as in. Fourteen yes, as, as, or as in.
Item Number Twenty-six, this is Res- Oh, I'm sorry, we need to vote on the resolution as amended. Commissioner, the machine's open. Cast your vote.
Murphy.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
All right, now Resolution Number Twenty. This is Item Number Twenty-six on your Agenda Resolution by Sheriff Christopher to appropriate funds in the Amount of forty-two hundred dollars from fund balance, uh, Fund One Seventy-One to an expenditure line item for the purpose of purchasing bulletproof vests for newly hired officers. We have a motion by Commissioner Price and seconded by Commissioner Keen. Is there any discussion or questions on the resolution? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
Resolution Number Twenty-one, Item Number Twenty-seven, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the Amount of ten thousand dollars to the sanitation management budget to cover a shortfall in contracted services for waste tires. We have a motion by Commissioner Keen and seconded by Commissioner Price. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
Thank you. Madam Burke, at this time, we're going to take a short, uh, ten-minute recess and then we'll finish our, uh, our agenda after that. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. We're back in, uh, in session here, uh, continuing on with our agenda. Uh, this is, uh, Resolution Number, uh, Twenty-eight, um, Resolu-, uh, Item Number Twenty-eight on your Agenda, Resolution Number Twenty-two, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the Amount of twenty-two hundred dollars to the property assessors' budget to cover a projected shortfall in postal charges. A motion by Commissioner Melton and seconded by Commissioner Douglas. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? You're correct. All right, if no questions, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
Can we expect something in the mail?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Resolution Number Twenty-three, Item Number Twenty-nine, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the Amount of five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for a ninety-five percent reimbursable supplemental maintenance grant for the airport. Uh, motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Holland. Is there any discussion or questions on this resolution? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
Item Number Thirty, Resolution Number Twenty-four, resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the Amount of one thousand seven, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars and fifty cents for the ARPA Health Department grant. Motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Keen. Is there any questions or discussion? Commissioner Preston, you recognize?
Thank you, Chair. Um, the question's probably from Mayor Mark and, uh, the, uh, the Health Department looks great on the outside. I haven't been inside. You, you, you mentioned that one of the maidens drive by and look at it, looks good. Uh, the resolution is asking to move, uh, hundred and seventy-five, seventy-nine thousand dollars in change to building improvements in account one-twenty-seven. Is this in, in addition to finishing the Health Department with a hundred and fifty-three thousand nine hundred dollars that's already in that line item?
Well, the, the project was, uh, around eight hundred thousand. Our portion is one hundred and twenty-three thousand of that. This is just different grants that are coming in and we're having to pay the contractors. We have to appropriate all that money. So where they're getting theirs, some was from, um, immunization fund. We've already closed that portion of it out. This is from a different fund. I forget which one it is, but, uh, the ARPA fund that the state put in on our project. Uh, so this is just money that's coming in from the other grants, just like the one previously, and we're having to pay it out to the contractors. I think this is the final one, uh, 'cause I've already went through and did the final inspection and the inside looks just as great as the outside.
Thank you. Got explanation. Don't be injured.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is any other discussion or questions? Not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
The Chair entertain a, uh, motion to suspend the rules. We're going to point notaries first. All right, uh, I stand corrected. Uh, Item Number Thirty-One, appointing the notaries. Uh, tonight, we have five notaries, uh, that are up for reappointment. Ann Jordan, Tabitha Arnold, Donna Collins, Melinda Fay Florence, and Marlande Gail Travis. A motion by Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Bain. Any discussion? All those in favor, uh, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations on the newly appointed notaries. Any other business?
We have two, two other resolutions that need to be brought up.
I'll entertain the motion to suspend the rules.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Nunry, seconded by Commissioner Melton. Uh, Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir. Remember, we have the two, the two resolutions that we need to suspend the rules for and then also the, uh, release of the trustee for the tax aggregate.
Yes, sir.
Did, did your, did your motion for those two resolutions have the tax aggregate?
Okay. All right, this is, um, Item Resolution Number Twenty-five, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the Amount of twenty thousand dollars received from opioid funds to a line item for expenditure to contribute to the Twenty-Fourth Judicial District Recovery Court. You know there's so much to this. All right, back to, uh, suspending the rules, which was my idea, and, uh, seconded, um, and Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Nunry. All those in favor of suspending the rules, cast your vote on the machine.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
All right, now, back to the live action. Uh, Amendment Number, uh, Resolution Number Twenty-five, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the Amount of twenty thousand dollars received from opioid funds to a line item for expenditure to contribute to the Twenty-Fourth Judicial Recovery Court. That is, uh, motion by Commissioner Melton and seconded by Commissioner Nunry. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Fourteen yes, fourteen yes.
See, representatives from Judge Bradbury's Court, do y'all wish to comment or anything?
I believe just Judge Bradbury wished he could be here. He was a crucial stuff, holly bubble thing, hard candidate, but you're aware of, uh, really appreciate the funding and consideration and not only the harvest program is actually, uh, doing really well. So, thank you all.
Thank you. This is, uh, Resolution Number Twenty-six, a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the Amount of fifteen thousand dollars received from opioid funds to a line item for expenditure to contribute to the Hope Center. Uh, resolution is, uh, motion is made by Commissioner Melton and seconded by Commissioner Burke. Is there any comment or discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes, one no.
Mr. Dobson, uh, from the Hope Center, I see you there. Would you like to?
I just want to thank you, uh, last year and this year, for, for giving the Hope Center initiatives. Uh, as practitioners, uh, this, this body, who'd have wanted to go into the missions of rich camera expenses, in the Hope Center ministry. So, always feel like, uh, has money in the district that needs help, reach out to us. This body's set aside to get people into Hope Center.
Thank you, Mr. Dobson. All right, uh, this is, uh, a resolution will be, uh, Number Twenty-seven, Item Number Twenty-seven, from, uh, Benton County Trustee, Beverly Beal. You should have that in front of you. This is, uh, uh, a, uh, resolution to release her from the twenty-twenty-three tax aggregate. We have a, um, I need a motion, motion from, uh, Commissioner Melton, seconded by Commissioner Nunry. Any discussion or questions about this? If not, we'll proceed to vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries. Fourteen yes.
Now we're down to any other business? Um, the sheriff. Now, we're down to any other business. The sheriff is recognized.
Thank you, Chairman. Another night in budget committee to the sheriff, it was brought up about these litter grant program, and we hadn't spent that much money that was in there, what we need to do with it. Praise, we might lose our funding for it for next year. Johnson, one of my bookkeepers contacted the state, and this is what they sent back. I cannot speak for other grants awarded, but for the litter grants, that is not the case. Litter grants are awarded to counties based on the formative. The things that affect the formative are road miles and population. If you do not spend part of your FY '25 litter grant, it will not affect your FY '26 litter grant for next year. That being said, we had some money left over, and we had some discussion on it in that meeting about maybe to spend as much of it as we can in this fiscal year. Maybe contracting some of it out, since we couldn't possibly do that much in that short amount of time. And I agree with that. Let's get what we can. If we can contract it to somebody from now until July 1, and then we'll go back. We're going to continue to pick up litter without name. We'll continue to pick it up from the Sheriff's Department, but what they can't get, contracts some of these roads out to help us clean up the county, it'll be good for the county to do this. And I think it's a good move to do it. And then starting July 1, we'll be right back up where we left off. And then next year, if we run into the same thing, when we got a little bit of money left, we'll contract it out again. We have to work around the weather conditions with inmates, how many hours they can work, holidays, such as that. So sometimes you have problems with inmates, you can't put them out. We've got 741 miles of road in Benton County, and, you know, you can't possibly get it with one truck, so that's why we get behind. And we do all we can. I would like for whoever, if we contract with anybody, however y'all want to handle it, I would like to go through the Sheriff's Department, because people know that's where to call to get their roads picked up. And then we can tell them what roads need picking up for us. If y'all are in agreements with that, I'm in agreements with it, up to July 1, and then we'll start over again. And if next year, we have money left again, like we did this year, then we'll contract it out again, maybe even a little bit earlier. If we see that, I just want us to get our biggest bang for our buck. If y'all are good with it, I agree with it. Let's get all of it cleaned up we can, and put an extra truck on the road for a few days anyway.
Too many contractors here.
I'd leave that up in the mayor's office, whoever.
That's not in play anymore. Tim contacted me about it, and I suggested that he contact C Task because of the amount of money. And C Task's response to him was it had to be bid.
Had to be what?
We'd have to bid.
Okay.
The amount of money, and just not enough time to bid it and get anything done. But he did reach out to C Task for advice on that, and that's what he got back to me.
I wasn't aware of that. Last I heard, we were going to try to get a contractor to work out.
Well, we had talked about that, but that question came up, and he did find that out.
I would like to say, if we could, I would really like for us to see if maybe we could contact Waste Management. They, with all this landfill that we've got here, they bring in trash from Kentucky, Nashville, Dixon, everywhere into Benton County. And a lot of it blows out of their trucks, the big majority of it. A lot of what's out there, if y'all go out Highway 7 on a Monday morning, after everybody carries their trash on Saturdays, there's a steady line of people taking trash up there. I'm one of them. It blows out of their trucks, and they just leave it laying in the road, so we're always on Monday mornings, real busy morning for us getting out there if we can. If we could reach out to Waste Management and see if maybe they would be willing to maybe furnish a salary for a person, a truck and a trailer. And we'd be glad to work with them on that, let it work through the Sheriff's Department. And if they pay that salary on that, we could put another truck on the road, but help a whole lot. There's another company here that I've been speaking with, and I could only go so far, because I don't have the authority to do it. They might also be willing to furnish a truck, trailer like what we've got, and maybe a salary every year to feed back into the community, and that would give us another truck. But I think with Waste Management being what they are out there, and a big business they are, I really believe they would, they would work with us on maybe getting another truck out there, as much money as we brings in and everything. So that'd be something that'd have to go through the mayor's office and the county commission. I'm not over that, but I tried to reach out to them, just to speak with them and see if that would be an option. So far, I haven't talked to anybody. I wanted to wait and get approval, to talk to them before I went any further, but that would sure help a lot, that put another truck out there. We, they'd pay a guard salary like we do now to go out there and be over to inmates and put a second truck on the road. We can, on a good day, if everything goes right, about three miles each side of the road, maybe four, maybe five, but on a real good day. And then you've got to work around rain, sleet, snow. If it's too hot for the inmates, if it's too cold for the inmates, that kind of thing. So we're kind of limited to how many, how many days we can pick up, but we pick up every day that we can. It's just a thought. I thought y'all might be interested, and if you want me to, I'll continue further with the company that's, that has moved into here and see if they'd still be willing to furnish another truck, trailer, and salary to give to the community. Just to help keep these roadways clean, because they get dirty, and they get dirty fast. Everybody calls on their roads worse than the county. You only get maybe three or four miles a day on both sides of the road, and that's not all you get there. Thank you.
Commissioner Price.
Got a question for the mayor. Mr. Mayor, could you give us a quick update on the seniors center? Where we, where we are, and the last looking good, out there parking lot?
Yeah, it's really looking great. They're almost complete with the whole project, waiting on the certificate of occupancy. You know, last month, y'all approved to change those weather heads and a couple of other things that you had said that we needed to do. So I believe everything's been completed. They're just waiting on getting the certificate of occupancy, so they should be moving in in the next week or two, soon as soon as we get that certificate. And I urge everybody to go around and look at that building when we do get it open. The transformation that project has made there, and also at the Health Department. I don't know if anybody goes out there as much, but I'm really proud of that project. A lot of people don't even know what's going on, but it was a complete remodel of that building, new central units, new generator and everything like that, all the different things that the county would have been out that money in years to come if we hadn't got the grant for that. So something to go by and be proud of, check it out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is Commissioner Arnold?
Chairman, last month, we had two ladies go through to us about the problems they was having around our place, trash and garbage and stuff. I went up to the children tree the other day and met with one of them and sent out a doctor and looked at the problems that they was having. And explained it to her like we did the other night, you know, we don't have a county building, but we do have authority through the County Powers Act, I hope you're familiar with C Task. And we have used that in the past to clean up properties when the owners would not clean them up. And I think that maybe we might need to see how much act that there is to that, that we can have the mayor to look at some of these properties, or if you have something in a district that you can just tell the people to call the mayor's office. I think a letter has to come to the mayor, and then call the sheriff, and I don't think neither one of them would like the idea of that thing. I don't blame them, but that may be the only option we have to get us some good stuff. But the county, through that County Powers Act, so a lot of us look into it and see just how far we can go with that, and start cleaning up some of the places where they just go by and bolt holes, nobody's building, and they're right on the edge of the road. Unhooked and laying on the side of the road, and see what authority we have to clean those up.
Thank you, Commissioner Holland. Commissioner Press.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I make it, Marie. I'm going to ask Q Mayor to go home and consider something. We all know Tim Patford, at least most of us do. Tim Patford is an artist that's renowned for long ways off. He's been moved from that old Health Department. He's teaching art classes in Humphreys County. I talked to him recently. I see all my daughters, and she's graduated from college. So he's teaching in Humphreys County more, and he's teaching in Erie County. Go home and think about finding him a spot in Benton County to teach. Furthermore, he wants to do a painting of the history of Benton County. He's talked to me about it, and maybe he's talking to you about it. He's becoming an old man. I don't know how many seasons he's got left. I hope that we can consider allowing him to paint the history of Benton County in one of the county buildings. That being said, are you in the flow? You've got something to think about, Mark.
Oh, I don't have to think about it. Tim and I are really good friends. I've commissioned him to do seven or eight paintings over the last few years of the history of Benton County, different landmarks and stuff. We have allowed him to use one of the rooms out at this old Health Department for the last couple of years. But we have that building actually leased to TCAT for the nursing training, and there was a conflict there with, with him setting up, and when they were needing their space. So I had to ask him to not use that anymore. We wouldn't lease it to him or rent it to him. We were just letting him use that for training. Kind of, you know, TCAT is doing great things across Tennessee, and we don't want to impede what they're doing. The new director, John Penn Ridgeway, contacted me and said, you know, we don't need him in there doing that. We're getting ready to spend money on your building. We're leasing it from you, and we're going to use TCAT money to remodel that building and make it up to spec. So I was just honoring their wishes.
Yes, I'm very pleased you did that well.
If y'all can come up with a place for him, I'm 100% good with that, because I love him, and he's done a whole lot of service to the county with his paintings. But I believe that what Mr. Keen said is that would be up to property and economy and you guys, so I'll leave y'all to it.
Well, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other business? Scott's presentation a little bit earlier, is there an appetite in the commission to authorize the mayor to have Scott go forward with that program? Or is that something that y'all want to... Mr. Keen?
I think we need to study it a little bit more and embed it in the community instead of coming up and saying, "Let's do this," because I don't think that's fair to other people in the area that are providers. And I'd like to see it on paper, too.
Point's well taken. Any other business? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Second.
Second.
We're now adjourned.
We've got, we've got...
I use Judge...